All right, we will call the Woodbury Select Board meeting to order on Monday, October 13th, 2025 at 6:00 P. M. And are there any adjustments to the Select Board agenda?
I have one.
All right.
We got an application on that Dexter LaFavor request from last time. I sent you a copy of an application form that I got from East Montpelier.
Yep.
She offered to translate it into a Word document so I could just change the names.
Yeah.
Yes, and now we have a form, and we have a form to be signed.
All right.
We pretty much approved of it last year, but maybe wait until Alfie gets here and let him look it over. Because there is a whole section on here, Bob.
So do you want to do that during the Road Commissioners Report?
Sure.
All right, and we will call that work in public right away?
I have one request for adjustment to the agenda, which is the extension letter for the Emergency Watershed Protection Program project on Cabot Road, Buck Lake Brook.
Do you want to do that under your section there?
Yeah, could do it then.
I'm sorry, Michael, I was writing at the same time. What was that?
It's the Emergency Watershed Protection Program. It's an extension letter. The grant agreement runs out at the end of this year.
Okay.
And it's not any, it's not our fault that nothing has happened yet, but they want us to request an extension on the, for another year.
All right. Any other amendments to the agenda?
Uh, yeah, one more.
Yep.
Me and Robyn Gray had an update for you guys regarding the personnel policy.
All right.
Did you mind if I put that under my report or?
Yes, let's do that right at the, right after the Treasurers Report.
Excuse me, could you give me your names so I can get?
I'm Heather Meechum.
Heather Meechum.
And also under your, well, under somebody's reports, that $10,000 we received.
In the Treasurers Report?
Yeah, I guess.
Okay. All right, if there are no other amendments to the agenda, we can go on to.
Wait a minute, wait a minute.
Okay.
Do we want to have an executive session to talk about employee, or hiring, possible hiring stuff at the end?
Probably should.
Okay, sure.
Yep.
And that would be pursuant to 1 VSA 313 A3.
A3, got it. You can, you want me to turn it down?
Yeah, that would be great.
These work great.
Yeah.
Put it to 60. Um, if there are no other amendments to the adjustments to the agenda, we can go on to approving the minutes from September 22nd?
I think we're pushing that we approve these minutes from September 22nd.
All right. Any discussion? Paul is in favor, please say aye.
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 Aye. The minutes are approved.
Was he here to your copy?
Thank you.
And goes to Robyn Gray. Thank you.
You did sign it?
Yeah.
Um, all right, that being taken care of, we have time for public comment. And welcome Heather, are you here for public comment?
No, I'm actually here with Darren.
Got it.
To talk about those.
So you're on the agenda with Darren.
All right.
And he's coming, right?
I hope so. But if not, I can speak to it.
Okay.
All right, well, if there is no other public comment, we'll go on to Robyn's Town Clerk Report.
I received a call from Tappy Delene. Her husband is Andrew, and he's the one that set up the sound system for that legislative talk that was down there where we could go today to the town hall.
Yep.
And they want to know if the town would like him to leave his system setup down there.
I think it was, it's a nice offer, but it's a, it's a big, big piece of responsibility and a big piece of equipment, and it's a little big for what, what it was used for.
Yep.
And do they know the building won't be heated?
It's only minimally heated.
Right, because that could be not so great for the system.
I've always thought we should, I mean, there are smaller systems around that are good for meetings like that. We don't have one. I always thought we should look into one, but we've gotten along without one so far. It was nice to have that. Were you there?
No, I was off.
That's a really nice offer.
Yeah.
Yeah, it is.
All right. So I guess one of us should say, call him and say thank you for a really nice offer, but we don't want the responsibility, essentially what it comes down to.
My next one might reinforce that.
Okay, great.
I got a call from Cindy Gordon, who would like to initiate a monthly potluck community dinner in the town hall.
That'd be nice.
But not if they're too expensive.
And if that system is in there, somebody's going to have to stand guard over that system so nothing happens.
All right, right, okay.
Yeah, that back room is already full.
I'll do it. To do, vortex.
So if the, and she would like to do this community potluck over the winter, which will mean there will be more heating costs involved in it. So what does she need to do other than fill out a roof? Are we going to charge her for each one of those?
No, I think that's in the public.
Yeah.
In our, just.
I mean, it's not going to be, yeah.
I think there, and I don't know if this is the case, but does she need an insurance rider? How does that work? If we just, if you rent it, you cover it and?
Yeah, they're responsible for the damage if anything happens.
Right.
It's covered under, or we've got a form that touches on that, I think. But she's not going to be, it's not like she's charging anything.
Yep.
Right.
Okay.
Nice idea.
But still have her fill out the form.
Yeah, you know, if you want to.
She can say that she's going to start, let's say, October 29th and go through, until 30th.
Or she can just list the dates.
Yep, and she knows where they are already.
Well, yeah.
Okay.
And you can put them on her calendar.
Okay.
It's a great idea.
And the appropriations for this coming town meeting have started coming in already. And we have at least two that have asked what they needed to do to increase their appropriations for this coming year.
And you have the policy that, that the petition form and all that.
Right.
If they want to increase, they have to petition to increase?
Yeah, they have to get 5% of the registered voters to sign the petition.
Oh, okay. Good to know.
We received new highway maps from Transportation.
Ooh.
They sent three of them. I did take one out and hang it up in the community room down at the office. The other two are in here.
Okay.
And I.
Why don't you go to the garage?
Okay.
So they, annually, they do that?
I don't think they've been doing it as much lately. They used to do it pretty religiously.
I think the one that I took down was 2018.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, it hasn't been up in a while, yeah.
But the amount of the roads didn't change.
No.
It still has the 44.561.
So they just kind of survey the number of roads every now and again?
We fill, we fill out a form every year to, if there is changes in the number of miles, and they just, I think they kind of go from that.
Okay.
If there is an extra map, I wouldn't mind having one. But if there's, if there isn't, I'll be fine without it.
As I said, there is one hanging, like I said, hanging on the wall in the community room.
Okay.
Diana says Elfie needs one, and then there's one other one in here.
Okay.
Yeah, you have to be officially appointed as the road administrator.
Oh, okay. I have, I have.
Don't look shocked.
I have the old map, so if it hasn't changed.
Yeah, we did make, there were some changes going on up on Nichols Pond Road, as far as, but, but I don't think, doesn't sound like they changed anything on that, so.
Do we, we have to let them know that they?
No, we did. I mean, we did go, I did go through a lot of stuff with their mapping people.
I'd be curious, because part of that is basically somebody's driveway that they consider the town class four road up at Nichols.
Really?
Yeah.
Which one's that? Oh, the, the little spur. Yeah, they took off that spur.
Okay, good.
That was classified as a town road, but they had dated it, and it's only goes to like two camps.
That's all I have for tonight.
All right, thank you. Uh, Lily, move on to the Treasurers Report, which we had in front of us.
All right, so starting off with tax revenue. We've collected 690,384 in current taxes during September. Remain balance is expected within the next few weeks. This is consistent with prior years. We should get one-third of it at the, you know, middle of the end of October.
When's the due date?
October 30th, uh, October 38th.
October 38th, yeah.
Um, looking at our fund balance, so it's about three pages back. Our highway has a little bit of deficit as we had expected. This will continue through October, or through October and November, and will correct itself once we transfer the funds over.
Lily, can you point me again to the fund balance where that is?
Yes, it is, the report is three pages back, so it's right behind the auditors' report.
Page one, it says. Page one, yep, thank you.
Yep.
So Herb and Library and Cemetery and those things don't change?
Not usually, the, uh, the.
Library gets drawn down, I guess.
Yes, Library gets drawn down. They also get increased after we receive our taxes because then they get their proportions from like the higher base.
Oh, okay.
Not used as much, there's not as much money. Any questions there? Um, looking at our budget versus actuals, the bad news feature, highlighting line items that do not increase evenly throughout the year. These lines will be grayed out to indicate that temporary variances are expected and not for concern. For example, if you look at page four, at the very top, you'll see the voted articles, and you'll see two Woodbury Fire Department truck and Woodbury Fire Department operation fees. Those show large variances. Those are paid quarterly. So throughout the year, they're kind of go up and down, they'll show variance, but they're grayed out, so it's not really of concern.
Right, you still have to, even though the budget is the budget in the second line here, I don't know why, but anyways, I'm sure it's just in the program. They, they want it, they want to separate it into quarters whether or not it needs to be.
It's just a nice way to track how we're doing throughout the years. But, you know, in a budget, there's things that we pay all upfront, there's things we pay annually, so it's not really a one size fits all, even though it can be. Any questions there?
Page two.
Yes.
Postage. Have you spent that much money in postage already?
Page two, post that at the bottom. Looks like we have. I'm assuming that was most likely for our tax season.
Probably the biggest, the biggest single mailing that you do, wouldn't you?
Yep, it is. But I'll, I can take a look at it.
But that doesn't include, I mean, the town report postage is separate, in a separate account.
And then Lily, I know you're going to get to it, but anything that is like a whole line that is highlighted gray, that's something we should be looking at with like a little more.
Yep, that's highlighted.
So, go ahead.
Yeah, the one that you'll see is still, RV Tech is still pretty high up there on page three, top of page three. Um, my only recommendation here is that, you know, last year, we're about three times over what we had anticipated for RV Tech, which is quite a good amount of money to spend extra.
Since we hadn't figured anything for RV Tech.
Yep. And so this year, I just want to make sure that we're not going to be in that same situation. So I wanted to pose if we had looked at alternatives or what was the extent of the research that we did when we decided to go with.
So we actually budgeted another $9,000 for RV Tech? I don't remember that. I mean, I know there was a lot, we spent a lot over last year, but I didn't realize we had another $9,000 this year.
That's to cover our monthly contract with them.
Oh, that's right, that's.
Yeah, but then the additional fees is what kind of pushes it above. You know, any second we have to call them or do anything, it's 175 an hour, which is.
We've had to do that a couple of times this year, right?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
You know, I think, I can't remember, but we could talk about it at some other point, but I don't feel like there were a lot of other options at the time. As fame is a recommendation.
Yeah, I've heard from other towns, it seemed to be the biggest dog around, is essentially what it is, yeah.
Then Skip did check that stuff too, and John probably.
So last year, you know, it was a big overage.
Yeah.
I was surprised to see that it didn't include new computers. You know, the PCs that are.
They didn't?
Now are not going to have to be refreshed very soon.
Yeah.
And second thing, and I pass this on to Skip, then Woody, who does the technical web support, has expressed interest in doing IT support.
Now, what's the difference there?
Web support versus IT support.
Right.
One is taking care of the website.
Yeah.
One would be what RV Tech is doing now, taking care of the computers and the network.
So he's just one guy. He could take over that whole.
He's expressed interest in it. I mean, he hasn't been that. He is just one person, so that's a downside. He was real, he's been real, is and has been real responsive on the website. So there aren't.
Probably, obviously, still got Skip and Wayne, right? They're, they're managers.
They're hoping, I think, to phase out more or less.
It's pretty expensive for what we've got.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, me, we probably have a contract with them through the rest of this year. Can't remember, but maybe we put it on a.
With who?
RB.
Oh.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think so.
From my understanding, that there isn't.
I think they did require us to sign a contract, yeah.
I thought I remembered that Skip was reaching out to them too to just kind of go over some of the things that had been costly. And I, I don't remember if we've spoken with them since that point.
Well, maybe we can talk about it at a future meeting. Put it as a future agenda item.
As far as you're concerned, you guys, are you, are you okay with your future, that you've got now? Don't need new, yeah, so.
It's more so the second and third authentication, and we need to do all the time.
What?
The, you know, with certain accounts, they add second and third authentication, and then you have to get a phone call to get onto your account, and you have to get this, that, and the other thing, but.
That seems to be.
For me, that's more bothersome than the, the packet.
That seems to be a standard thing now.
Yeah.
Yeah.
All right, thank you for bringing that up, Lily.
And you also see a note from our auditor, John, confirming his review of the September main recommendations in this packet. This will be here monthly, and John's here to come up with you guys with that. Any questions?
I have a question.
Yes.
I signed something, the state was offering us money, and then I got an email from you saying that it was received. Is that true?
Yep.
The $10,000?
Mm-hmm.
Where did you put that?
In miscellaneous.
Miscellaneous, okay. So that's a bonus.
It is. We should probably discuss where we would like to use those funds.
Yep, I have an idea.
Elevator?
What?
Just kidding.
If there, if that window bid comes in, something outrageous, we could use that money just to buy some new plain old insulated windows. Not bulletproof, but at least for the front of the building.
Okay.
Anyways, that'll take some more thought after we get that.
Moving on to other updates, the tan signatures. You guys, I saw that some of you got it, some of you didn't get it. My understanding is that the bank's supposed to take it for the holiday, so I wasn't able to get it to you before this meeting. It should be sent to you tomorrow. Do you guys want me to send you text messages when I get sent over?
I don't get text messages, but I do get emails, so. And the last, I didn't sign the last one because I wasn't sure if we all had to sign it. I thought it was just for this year.
I'm pretty sure it's all, yes, my opinion.
So will there be, is it like a 24-hour deadline? I, I hesitated, and then I missed the deadline, and it expired.
Yeah, I think it's usually about 48 to 72 hours, I would, I would assume. But that's just from my experience with other companies. I don't know if, you know, this one specifically, but I'll talk about it.
You can send her a text message. She knows how to do text.
Yeah, well, my other problem is I, I can really only do it like from my house. So I'll just, I will remember to be really good about checking my emails each morning this week in anticipation, so that it doesn't sit for too long.
And I, should I re-sign?
I believe so.
Okay.
Yes, I believe so. After you guys sign, it'll get sent back to me to sign, and Robyn will also have a form to sign as well, and then we will be good to go. And we'll have that money, money in the bank for us too. The capital equipment plan, quick update here. I sent it to Elfie for review. Pending his feedback and some additional insights on it, I will hopefully be able to bring it to board next meeting so we can talk about it more extensively. Last week, I attended BLCT's town fair sessions on capital improvement plans and municipal bonds. So capital improvement plans, from my understanding, our town does not have a capital improvement plan. Is that correct?
Right.
Okay. So they really help towns prepare for infrastructure projects, and what I learned is that they really help stabilize tax rates for towns. And I think over the last three years with our flooding and with the recent tax increase, it might be worth a while to explore creating a capital improvement plan and also maybe diving in a little bit, learning about municipal bonds and possibly bonding for some of our big infrastructure improvements. Capital improvement plans kind of helping that bond process along. So creating a CIP is a much longer process for a lot of different towns. Some towns create a committee for it, but I wanted to bring it to you guys and see if this is something that we, you know, probably be interested in, in doing and moving forward with.
Yeah, we've never really had a meet track before. Like, we did come up with some huge infrastructure projects.
Also think it's a good way to, you know, have accountability with our taxpayers as well. If they have eyes on it, they can see, you know, what we're planning, what things are going to cost, and, you know, make sure that that tax rate doesn't change as, as much as possible.
And then in that plan that is developed, how far out are they looking? Is it 10 years, 15 years?
Uh, 10 to 20.
10 to 20.
I think they said a good one goes 15 years.
Okay.
So.
Did we get a email today from some outfit that was maybe going to offer some kind of funding? Did you get, did that come from either one of you? Never mind, I didn't bring my laptop, so I don't know.
What was it, Diana?
It was some kind of an out, uh, program that offered some funding to towns.
That may have been me.
Oh, okay.
That may have been me. So if we're good and set on number three, we can move on and talk about what Diana's moving to.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, I think, and I, and I do think that.
Oh, that's okay, I did read that here, okay.
Capital improvement plan is worth talking about as a town, yeah.
Yeah. The recommendation is that small steps forward make the best path forward. So either the, creating a capital equipment plan is its first step in itself, and then just kind of expanding that to, you know, more capital that we have, so.
Thanks.
I'll move on to number five since Diana mentioned it.
You were so great about it.
Yep, so I connected with the Village Trust Initiative through the Vermont Council on Rural Development. This is a program that helps fund community revitalization and some infrastructure projects. So it's specifically for small towns under 2,500 people. Robyn and I have a meeting next Monday to discuss with them if any other funding could be potentially worked for Woodbury and kind of our future plans. They have an annual application that's since closed for this year, so this wouldn't be anything that came to fruition until next year.
Come on.
All right.
No, I'll read it from them.
Um, actually from my sister. Her, her niece became friends, or her niece, my niece became friends with the director's daughter, and they've gotten together as a couple and got talking, and I got sent her information, and here we are today.
How cool.
Um, any questions on that? The old power station utilities, we're set up with Burns Energy and will hopefully this week be set up to transfer the electric. One thing to note with Burns Energy is that if we're not going to be filling it up completely, we have to manually monitor the oil levels. So a couple things here. Whose responsibility is that? I, I'm certainly able to take that responsibility. If so, I'll need access to that building to monitor it as well.
Yeah, I was thinking maybe, maybe we could give that to Tim since he's already familiar with that building, and I'm sure he has a key. But you did tell him that because the building's going to be torn down, we didn't want it filled all the time, right?
Yeah. Yeah, and they said essentially.
On call?
Yeah, well, yeah, you got a call if you want us to fill it up, but not fill it up completely, so. And Tim, as in?
Neil.
Tim, go ahead.
Tim Neil, he's on the road crew and also on the fire department.
So I can give him a call and ask him. Last wrap-up of business, the CVRPC mutual aid agreement. We had talked about appointing two town representatives to serve as coordinators for the mutual aid agreement. Have we had any of those discussions, or?
I thought we did. I thought we dealt with that, Michael.
No, we haven't. This is, we haven't dealt with this.
Did we talk about asking John, I thought we talked about asking John and Ray. I don't remember who that's been else, but.
Just a second, I feel like there was somebody else.
There might be something in the last month's minutes. It might be good to talk about that.
Yeah, agreed. Yeah, agreed.
Uh, John and um.
I don't see anything, but do you wanna check if we get mine?
Sure, I mean, I don't know if it was la- I don't think it was the last meeting, it might have been the first.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, I don't see any last year's.
Yeah.
I think the discussion was to ask, see with Michael, LPM or the new road commissioner and potentially John.
That's what it was?
Yeah.
Yep, okay.
Well, I have this recollection that maybe I was supposed to contact John, which I didn't do, um, but I can.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, once we have those two appointments, then I'll bring the um, I'm not getting the sign and we'll be group meeting now.
Johnny Gordon. And that is. Yeah, I'm pretty sure I was supposed to call him, I didn't.
And who were the other two people mentioned? I didn't get that in my.
I think we may have asked that uh whoever the new road commissioner is or
Okay.
And um, I think your name might have been mentioned too, Michael.
Okay, alright.
Alright, thanks Lily.
That's Erica.
Were you gonna do the personnel policy update?
Oh, yeah.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes.
So, um, so Lily and I met again, we've been trying to figure out um how to proceed and so we're kind of wanting to get a sense from the select board of what they really wanna see, um I know I was originally approached about this um for the benefits for the town clerk, town treasurer and for their assistants. So, there are different ways that we could do this and Lily has done quite a bit of research and talking with VLCT about it. So, we could have two separate personnel policies.
Well, that's already been decided. I mean, the personnel policy for the road crew
Yes, but do you want a separate personnel policy for the town clerk and the town treasurer, or do you want um to be, have it be incorporated in the present personnel policy?
The board decided, when I was working on this, I had it both together and the board decided they wanted to have it separate.
Okay, when I was on the board, we also decided we wanted it separate.
So, okay.
So, um
Can I, can I hold, just out of curiosity, since I wasn't on the board then, why?
Um, because it was very confusing, um when it was all together, um, you know, with employees and, you know, the elected officials, town clerk and town treasurer, you know, technically they get paid by the town, but they, and so in some kind of fashion, they're employees. But there were, in the old personnel policy, um, it would just was, if the town clerk or the town treasurer, you know, it was kind of oh, this is what it is for a town employee, which is basically our road crew, and then there is this separate thing for the town treasurer and town clerk. So it just got, it was a lot of confusing language, um, and it, the um select board in my day when, when we were working on it just felt it would be much cleaner if it was just town employees and then we just create an appendix that would um list the benefits that the town treasurer and the town clerk were, that the, were available to them. And so that's sort of what we had started um before I was finished on the select board, um and the personnel policy didn't get finished in my, my time on the select board.
And for a couple of years after that.
And, and so then, um VLCT felt that there should be this form, um, it's kind of like the form which I believe still exists where a new road crew employee has to read the personnel policy and then sign that they've read it, so that um it's kind of a uh protection for liability for the town, that this person has said that they have read the personnel policy and they will abide by it and, and then if there's some kind of infraction, then, you know, there's this thing in writing that the town has. So, VLCT felt that that should be true also for elected officials who are getting benefits from, from the town. And they create, they sent us a template of the language for that. So, what Lily and I are trying to figure out is how, do you want this to just be, do you want it to be a separate policy where anything that was relevant to an elected official would be listed and then things that are more exclusive to let's say the road crew, because that's basically the only employees we have, that that
Well, there's assistant town clerk and assistant town treasurer.
Well, that's, but that's part of the town clerk.
But they're not elected, they're
They're appointed, but they aren't appointed by the select board.
But they should be. Oh, I really, I know.
So, um, yeah, so do you want a separate personnel policy that would be just kind of addressing uh issues for the elected officials or, um, and, because there are many more that are sort of in there for the road crew.
But there are many, many, uh probably seventy-five percent of what's in the road crew policy also applies to anybody, it's all, you know, federal stuff and
Yep.
Things that have to be in there, so you should just
Those would be things that would be in the separate personnel policy.
So, I didn't know why you couldn't just take those out and, I mean
Yeah, well, that's what we're, why, do you want us to take them out and have it be in a separate
No, I want you to take the new, take the old policy and cross out where it says road crew and put in town clerk, you know, I just, I don't know why it has to be
Okay, well, that's kind of what we had before and that is one of the things that we were, you know, wondering about, how, how do you want this to be?
I'm kind of curious, since you guys are the two that are working on it right now, um, because I, I remember having this discussion and we had decided to keep it separate. Actually more for like office versus road crew, just because there's such significant differences with so many parts of the job. Um, and I kind of feel like it could go either way, um, do you guys have a feeling on, you know, is one way gonna be significantly more um work than either?
I, I would say other towns, what other towns use, what VLCT has recommended is one overarching personnel policy and then an appendix or um as, that um, gosh, what did they call it? The form of acknowledgement, um, that outlines what benefits are given to the clerk, treasurer and any language or wording regarding their appointed assistants as well.
Mm-hmm.
Um, is usually how most towns go for it. Um, if we, having two separate individual policies that say seventy percent of the same thing is a bit redundant, we can do it that way. Um, but having one personnel policy with a signed form of acknowledgement from the town clerk that outlines our benefits would be a simpler win.
Yeah, it's too bad it's VLCT didn't say that to us two or three years ago when we were doing all this work.
But it makes a lot of sense and I think, you know, if we're going over it now, let's do it in a way that makes sense, I don't know how you guys
We spent a lot of money last time, going back and forth with VLCT, of course, I didn't get paid, but, you know, we spent a lot of time, we spent, I spent hours one day with an attorney, I don't even remember what the particular issue was, but VLCT wouldn't give me an answer, so anyways.
So
I don't know why it has to be so all done all over again.
So, you
The, well, the benefit of that is, is that the work that you did previously on the highway policy is up to date as of twenty twenty-four. Um, and would apply to all employees um of the town, so I don't think anything in terms of legality would really need to change, just language that is more inclusive instead of road commissioner or road crew get X, Y, Z, or road commissioner or road crew are expected to act X, Y, Z, just be employees of the town.
Part of my thinking is, is that it could just be an appendix to the present personnel policy. And it would state, um, you know, the benefits that the town clerk and town treasurer, and there could be a statement that, um, you know, uh, that parts of the personnel policy are also, um, you know, cover, that, that covers or that that um, the town clerk and the town treasurer are responsible um to live up to those parts of the personnel policy. We could list the different sections um that are um considered to be appropriate for the town clerk and town treasurer and their assistants. So it would be just, it would be in the personnel policy, um, we might wanna remove the, um, you know, it's very, the new policy is very specific, it just addresses the uh highway crew, road crew. So it could just say all employees or all, you know, personnel that are paid by the town or, you know, however, which would cover the town clerk and the town treasurer, um, and I'm sure the VLCT lawyers would have the proper language for that. But we could just have it be an appendix at the end.
To an, to an overarching policy?
Right.
Okay, yeah.
Yeah. It makes a lot of sense to me, seems like a really good way to organize it.
I wish I had a copy of the policy with me, but I don't. So I, I understand it, but would make sense if you wanted to have something separate as an addendum that only talks about benefits.
We could do, well, yeah, that's, that was my original thought, I mean, that's what we had started to do when I was on the select board, I have a
Yeah, well, that's what I, yeah, I was working on that too until, until the board changed their mind, so, um
I understand, right.
To go back now and
You and Lily are in agreement, these two are generally in agreement.
No.
No, alright, I'm, I, you have to make it clear for me, there's not one overarching policy within appendix.
No, oh, what do you mean? Right now, there's one policy that only applies to the road crew and there's another po- policy outdated but still in effect that applies to the rest of them.
Hmm, there's no policy that's outdated and still in effect because you, the select board, a couple of years ago basically created a new personnel policy, so that other personnel policies, in my opinion, isn't really in effect.
That's in your opinion, I always thought that that was not true. In my opinion, the, what, the parts that still apply to, that aren't covered in the road crew policy still apply.
Maybe we should focus on what we want, not what we currently have, like, just for the sake of clarity.
Why do you, why do you feel that they still apply if there has been a total update of the personnel policy?
I just, uh, it's, in my opinion, like it is in your opinion, different. But in my opinion, the old policy, since we didn't update that part, when we do the new policy, the old policy still applies.
What part didn't you update?
The part about the town clerk and treasurer and those benefits.
I guess that's a question for VLCT, I mean, I think, you would think if you create a new updated personnel policy and you eliminate the town clerk and town treasurer, then there's nothing
You could say that they're still left hanging, but they're not, they're, they're, they're living under the old policy.
No rules.
Alright, I'm a little bit lost, but it sounds like, yeah, one overarching policy within appendix that would cover the benefits that the town treasurer and town clerk and any appointees by them would cover? That appendix would cover it?
Mm-hmm.
And, I'm sorry.
And then a possible reference in that appendix to the parts of the personnel policy that would apply to them, um, you know, and, and I cannot, you know, all the boilerplate government stuff.
I don't think, a lot of that stuff doesn't even say who it applies to.
I think if it's an overarching policy, it would be assumed, right?
Okay.
That it would be uh applied to, to everyone.
The appendix is sort of an addition to, it has not taken place, taken place of anything.
And so Diana, what's your objection to that?
Well, um, it sounded like they were talking about rewriting the whole policy so that it would include both.
That was one, one thought, that we were presenting you with options to get, because we don't know, we don't want to create what you don't want.
I have a suggestion, um, because I, I do feel like the conversation's a little bit confusing, um, because we're talking about a few different things. Would you guys wanna maybe just come up with an outline that we could look at, um, that might help to clarify? I think I understand what you're both thinking is the best way and I believe that I'm on board with that. Um, but I think if we just have like an outline of it, you know, maybe it would be a little bit easier to visualize, um, and I don't know, I feel like that could be helpful.
I think we need fairly quick to create something.
Yeah, I mean, I don't know if Lily and I are actually in agreement, but we have discussed different options.
Okay.
Which is what we presented to you tonight.
Okay.
Yeah, um, so.
Would you be willing to do that and do you guys feel like that would be helpful?
Would you just have to
That would be helpful for me, for sure.
Change the uh, the title page on the road crew policy?
The title page.
Yes. The cover that says, this applies to
Well, and a lot of the, and a lot of the parts of the personnel policy, it mentions the road crew specifically.
Right, but you don't need to change those, if you do an addendum, you don't need to change all those.
No, we wouldn't, yeah.
But it might be clearer if
Agreed.
It might be clearer if it was changed.
I think the personnel policy should go, the bulk of it should go for all employees.
Yeah, agreed, yeah.
And then if you want to have something separate, specific to the office, because their benefits and their, their work efforts are different, then you have a separate appendix for that, I, I, if my opinion matters, that's what I would
Of course it does.
Yeah, I just don't want to see all of the work wasted on the policy that
So you guys are gonna come up with, uh, hopefully, like an outline to make it clear for the difference.
So, please explain the outline.
So, I'm just imagining like, just sort of, if you can imagine a table of contents, um, or something like that, just that outlines like what, what would the policy look like under your vision, like it would and maybe I'd have to draw it to explain it very well, but
I would prefer to make an outline under your vision of what you want.
What if, could I, maybe all of us could come up with our own version of an outline and then, I don't know.
I guess, I feel like you guys have presented like, uh, at least two different ideas, maybe three, and I think, in my mind, they're pretty, like, I don't understand all the, the, the pieces of those, so I guess if I just had it in writing, I could
Try it one more time? Um, so essentially how I see it is two, two options. The first option is to keep it exactly the way that it is, we have one highway and we have one personnel policy for office staff of basically just elected officials. Um, so we have two separate seventy-five percent of the same information, but two separate documents. The other option is to have, take the updated highway one, because legality wise, that's the most updated and up to date for state of Vermont, federal laws. We have that, make it a little bit more inclusive, instead of saying highway, say personnel policy. Um, change a couple words in the policy, instead of saying road commissioner, you say all employees. Um, and then a, one piece of paper, an addendum that states exactly what the clerk and treasurer and appointed assistants get. So, either we stay the way that we are with two individual policies, or we have one policy that's inclusive with an addendum and a signed acknowledgement from elected officials.
I like that idea Lily, the only suggestion I would make, um, would be possibly where there are differences between what certain people get and others get.
Mm-hmm.
Maybe not just have one piece of paper for the elected officials, but also have a separate piece of paper specifying those differences, you know, for the, um, the employees, um, you know, so that, uh
Yeah, I think we, we already do sort of have that.
Okay.
But not, not really set up, I mean, I, I put together and it sounds like Diana did also the separate list of benefits that the, um, town clerk and town treasurer and their assistants get. That was part of what, what I did on the work of the personnel policy, um, and I, I don't know if I sent that to you guys or not.
I don't remember seeing that.
So, yeah, I mean, that, we could easily do that, it's sort of almost done already, um, and some of it is outdated and, you know, we'll have to the town clerk and the town treasurer will need to put some input into what they wanna see in there. Put some input into what they wanna see in there.
Why, they don't give themselves benefits though.
Yes, but they, you know, are, do they, are they still working eighteen hours a week, that's a question that Lily and I wondered, you know, that's part of what's in there. And, and their benefits are prorated based on that number of hours, um. So, and the, the assistance, it's prorated, um, you know, even, even less. So, so those are some changes that, you know, we'll have to work out, um, and the select board has to approve them. So we can, we can create a new outline that way for the, for the benefits, that would be part of this, um, appendix. And then, you know, we could create an outline that it shows the difference between what a town employee, what benefits they're. Um, eligible for, and, and then another, um, listing of what the town clerk and town treasurer, what benefits they're, um. Eligible for, um. And we could even make a list of what parts of the personnel policy we feel are appropriate to. The town clerk and town treasurer, um, you know, outside of. What the employees wanna have, um, or what, what's in the personnel policy for employees, basically the road crew.
So it says here, an alternative meeting is recommended to review these considerations in greater detail, I'll vote for that.
Yeah, we, this, we could spend a lot of time, and we will probably spend some time on this, and we don't wanna, I mean, we've taken up. Pretty good amount of time already with this meeting.
I'd like to have the policy in front of me when.
Yeah, so we'll put it on the agenda for next meeting.
We, we just wanted to get a sense of what, you know, we, we've come up with different options, we're not sure what. The select board, that's, that was the purpose of presenting this to you tonight, just to, how do you want us to proceed?
So if, if the only difference, the only thing that the, um. Office people need to have laid out is benefits. Then maybe it just could be an addendum and not have to go through and change all the wording of everything that applies to the road crew.
Yeah.
Make sure there's not some other parts that we don't wanna skip from the old policy.
Yeah. So, okay, so that's what we'll do, we'll figure that out, okay.
Alright, we'll put it on the agenda for next meeting as well, thank you both.
Michael, there was a extension later?
Yeah, um, was it my, am I?
We're gonna do that during Michael's.
Oh, I'm sorry, we didn't get to your part yet. Whoops, we skipped to go to the fun part.
Thank you for coming, yeah, Heather and Darren are here to talk about elevator problems.
Yeah, and a couple other fun things with Woodbury Elementary, so, just a quick. Uh, refresher against Darius Simmons, uh, Woodbury Elementary, board representative, and, I don't know if you can just speak for.
Heather Meecham.
The other representative, yeah. So at our monthly meeting on Thursday, we kinda got, um, drop the bomb in, in so many words that. I'll start with the elevator, um, so the elevator here, Woodbury, had, um. An inspection done by, uh, it's a state inspector, so I did ask Joe about second opinion on different things. So that was one, it's a state inspector, it was a state inspector, and they're a state inspector, right, like, a different state inspector probably won't give a different answer. But, um, they found rust on the carriage, so. I don't know the details of what that means, but essentially, that means that we fix it or they shut it down.
Well, it's okay for now, but it probably won't last another year, so they'll come and re-inspect probably a year from now. And then have to need it, inoperable, if it's not fixed.
I'm sorry, I couldn't hear all of that.
Oh, I was saying that when they came out to inspect it, they mentioned that it was okay for the next year. They don't expect it to be okay beyond that.
Oh.
Essentially, the inspector gave us a grace period to get it fixed, um, of a year. Um, there isn't an estimate on the cost of that fix at this point. But my impression is that we're, you know, at least the tens of thousands of dollars.
So that, that would be just to fix this rust problem?
Yep, yeah, um, so the other fun piece of the elevator is that this elevator, as well as the elevator in Hardwick Elementary. Are of a certain age where the control panel, that, if I understand it correctly, it's, you know, the mechanism that makes it go up and down and blah, blah, blah. Is so old that if something breaks, they're literally scouring the internet to find a piece. From another one of these elevators that somebody else has disassembled, that they can piecemeal out to fix it. So an example, I guess, last year, doing some minor repairs in Hardwick. Somebody dropped a screwdriver on the panel, broke a piece, and it took them months to find the replacement piece. So in the meantime, you have the inoperable elevator, which, in any school or public building, means that you're not ADA compliant at that point.
And so what happens?
Um, so, there, the proposal is to replace that.
No, I guess, I mean, let's say that that part breaks and you have an inoperable, uh, elevator and you're not ADA compliant. What happens to, like, what are the consequences, I guess?
So, I, I think long term, the consequences are you. I don't know if it's a fine, or if it, I mean, you might be able to speak to this better than me, um, or if it's just you can't operate that building.
Well, practically speaking, it would mean that if there is a handicapped child that needs to use that elevator, they can't. That creates a lot of hardship for that child, and.
A lot of what?
Hardship.
Hardship, okay, I think.
For that child, I don't think it would mean the entire building would be shut down, I don't think. I mean, since it's a functioning school, children have to be educated, um, there might be potential fines or a particular deadline by which we have to fix it. And in terms of the fact that the town uses the building for certain community events, town meetings, et cetera. It might create hardship for members of our community who might need to use the elevator. Um, and they're estimating that the cost of just fixing the control panel, not including the.
The rust.
The rust is in the neighborhood of a hundred and fifteen percent?
Hundred thirteen thousand eight hundred and seventy-five dollars to, to replace one of those control panels.
So times that by two?
Times by two, but we're not talking about Hardwick for now.
Gotcha, okay. Do you have any estimate of what year that elevator was put in? I don't know.
Who's been here longest?
Less than forty. It wasn't here when I was.
So I guess that's why I asked, because it's not broken now, right, and so there must be some sort of grace period that, in the event that it breaks. So they're suggesting we replace a hundred and fifteen thousand dollar part that hasn't failed, um, that might fail in the future. Just, 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 I just wanna make that clear.
Yeah, yep, absolutely, and.
And they also used that elevator to get the food out.
Exactly.
Yep.
To the cafeteria, yeah.
Right, and so there is, there was brief discussion about. Can we, you know, rearrange things, especially for that, like, how would we manage that, but since it was like a hypothetical. We have a lot of business, we moved on, um, mostly just bringing that up as a, like you said, it's not something that is, we have to do this now.
Right.
But it's something that's, boy, the sooner we can do it, probably the less hardship we end up with.
Yeah.
The rest of the carriage thing, we have a window, that has a deadline.
Yeah.
Um, and then, you know, part of that is, if we're gonna do one part of that project, it's probably cheaper to have somebody come in and do all of that project at once.
You mean the, you mean the control panel and the rust?
Yeah, I don't know that for sure, and I, that's something that would need to be teased out in any further conversations with the facilities folks. Um, as well as looking at the, the funding and the, and the, um, the budgeting for that going forward.
So I just have a question, um, so is the school district looking for the town to help with this? That's just, you're letting us know that that's a, an expense that's coming up for the school district.
Yeah, and so.
We thought we would flag it to you all early, um, because. This school building is technically owned by the town, um, and we as a town might have an interest. Albeit maybe not an obligation, but at least an interest in maintaining that building moving forward.
It's, was there a third option, like the hammer falls really hard at some point and the whole thing has to be replaced, did I see that in your email?
So in terms of, yeah, if the, i- if the rusting isn't fixed, then the whole, like, the elevator. The hammer, I think, was, the elevator got shut down at that point, and it's not turned back on until it's fixed.
Yeah, okay, so there's not, replacing the whole thing is not one of the options.
No, I don't think that's what they're looking at, no. Um, the other, the, the third bit of facilities expense that's coming up is replacing the fire escape on the side. There is a design that I could send you all to from Co and Co Architects, um, to bring it up to, to code, to the fire code. Um, we asked some questions, had some thoughts about that, but essentially, that's looking at, we'll call it three hundred and ninety-six thousand dollars.
Whoa.
And that's, again, something that the, we're talking about as the school district in funding the replacement for it. Um, but that's another large expense that's on top of these other things.
This is the Woodbury, sorry, this is the Woodbury School Fire Escape, that seems, am I just crazy that that seems incredibly expensive for, uh, the stairs?
Yes, it does seem, so, it's not just the stairs, so, so it's making the stairs fire compliant.
Oh, okay.
Uh, fire escape compliant, especially for children, it's having a slight roof over the top of it, so that, you know, everything coming off the main roof doesn't just ice the stairs as it does now. Um, but then, the other kind of kicker for that was the fire marshal said, oh, you don't have a sprinkler system in the basement. So technically, no child should ever be in the basement. And what part of that, three hundred and ninety-six thousand dollars was, was the idea that if we replace some of the windows and make them window wells. And then there's a fire escape essentially option, right, so instead of just being a window at ground level, you have the ability to get up to that well and out. Then, again, if I'm understanding this right, that might. Satisfy the fire marshal, the fire inspector, to say, okay, kids can be down there now, that, that also felt like another.
That's a big group.
I know, I agree.
And we understand from the facilities guy that his standard process is to go out to bid for these things. These are just the initial, like, cost estimates, and there's a whole process to get alternative bids and then make the best selection.
They'd wanna think about it, we'll never have a child in the principal's office.
But unfortunately, it also includes library.
Yeah, and the nurses.
Yeah. And I can send you all of that information, it's in our board folder and everything, too, like, all the cost breakdown of all of that, so that three ninety-six is basically. To bring the entire building up to fire code standard.
Oh, the three ninety, the three ninety-six would involve the fire escape and the.
And the windows.
And, and the elevator?
No.
Oh, okay.
Doesn't include the elevator.
So, but the rest of the building has, uh, fire suppression already?
I don't think so, I think there's just enough fire escape routes, but.
Oh.
So that's how you get out of having to have fire suppression in the basement by having the egress?
Oh.
Yeah, that's the idea.
Was it the fire marshal that gave you the estimates?
I'm just thinking about the fire escape.
That came from the architects, as far as I know.
Was the control panel estimate, where did that come from, did that come from an, someone who would actually do the work, or, okay?
I think it came from one other area, am I right?
Yeah, so Joe Houston, the facilities manager, said the elevator control upgrade was quoted by our elevator service contractor.
Okay.
So somebody that the district already hires, and they do the inspections on all the elevators.
Gotcha.
Or, or repairs, I should say, the inspections, I guess, are done by state inspector, but, um. Yeah, and I don't know if that's something that we can seek other bids or, or information about. Um, so, I mean, all of this is something that I, I think we, and most of the board would say. We need to include this as an expected expense going forward, something to the tune of half a million dollars is not something that we're gonna just add to the. Budget, and it's probably gonna be something that would get bonded, some of just the reserve, the capital reserve fund, I would lobby to include to try to offset a little bit of that bond.
Capital reserve fund?
So the district has, each year that we have a surplus in the budget, right? So typically, it's because teaching positions don't get filled, and so we budgeted it last year, that position never got filled, that money never got spent. So it gets rolled into, typically, it's half and half, half just goes back to the taxpayers to keep the rate a little bit lower. The other half gets put into the capital reserve fund, so if there's a big expense that was kind of unexpected, or even sometimes expenses that are expected. We have this, this nest egg sort of, to be able to say, we don't need to raise taxes, we don't need to ask for a bond, we can pull it out of this to fix a building, to fix an issue.
So how are we paying for all that work at Hardwick Elementary?
We as taxpayers in the district certainly are.
That's what I mean, how, how is that, would that have to be a bond, or does that go into the?
Oh yeah, I mean, are you talking about the PCV renovation, yeah, that was a bond that, um.
The voters had to approve separately?
Yep.
And we voted on that too?
Sure did.
Okay.
Yeah, yep, so, so, I mean, you look at those kinds of things, and I feel like, as a district, we can easily justify that, bring it to a bond, have that vote. My concern is, as I think I said to you all, was that it was already floated, as it so often is, of. Why are we gonna invest half a million dollars in a school, we have a perfectly good school up the road that all these kids can go to, right? And, you know, to, to the rest of the board's credit, I think that got shut down pretty hard, pretty quick, rightfully so.
But when the voters go to vote, yeah, they, they're all gonna get, Hardwick and everybody gets to vote.
And we know that opinion is not a rare one in Hardwick, so, it's, uh, it's an uphill fight. And so I guess my, part of my reasoning for bringing it to the select board as well, not just the, let's all be on the same page here. But if there is, you know, a grant that we could tap into, uh, you know, away as a town, we show more initiative to say. Look, we, we wanna keep this going, we want this to, to work, what if, instead of a half a million dollar bond, we take some out of the reserve fund, and then the town pitches in a little bit more? That might be a hard pill to swallow for any and all of us, who are gonna see our taxes then go up that little bit more, because we as a town are doing something like that. But, again, it's a hypothetical that we might buy enough goodwill to make that number lower to be able to sell it to the rest of the district.
Or you should at least be aware of some of the facilities improvements that need to be made moving forward. In order to keep the building, um, functioning as a town asset, when the, I don't wanna misspeak here. Whether, because when I read the tea leaves and the trends in the community and Act seventy-three, and. There's probably a high likelihood that the building will come back to the town eventually. I, you know, I'm just putting it out there, so we just thought we would make you all aware, and if there's anything, if the town does have an interest in helping. Um, I, I don't know, you mentioned some interesting things in your presentation about potential grants, potential, you know. Um, capital funding or whatever, I, I don't know, and it is a historic building, I think it is a really amazing asset for the town.
So, Mike, so a number of years ago, um, the town did do kind of a mutual. Funding, um, project with an outdoor classroom that has yet to be built, and, um, and we did. Give the school district a pretty good chunk of money.
It was about fifteen thousand dollars.
Fifteen thousand, and then we were gonna use the leftover school fund, um, when we were, um, you know, became part of the district towards that. That, I mean, as a person who was on that committee to create that thing, um. um, it just, it, you know, it's something that hasn't happened, it seems to always get pushed down the road and maybe it's not so important anymore. Um, maybe this is, and this could be a way that the town could, um, give some money um, towards the school for these things. There is a state law about a town giving schools money. I can't remember the particulars of it, but I remember that we did have to deal with that, um, when we were working on that outdoor.
Did you see the?
Was there not ARPA money though, that maybe?
It was some ARPA money, yes.
Could it be, could it be used for something such as this? Like, I know there, I don't know much about the ARPA thing, but I know there are parameters that it had to follow.
Probably the select board would have to approve changing the use of that money.
Mm-hmm.
I mean, it was originally voted on to go towards this outdoor classroom, um, and, um.
Have you seen the architect's drawings on that?
Uh.
I think they probably spent more than fifteen thousand dollars already just on, it's sad.
Yeah. Well, that's what happens, you know.
When you get involved with the, I know.
So, I mean, as far as, I like that idea to be able to think laterally, you know, and and things that are funded, but I honestly think that keeping the outdoor classroom, and if Joe's right, that this summer, ideally, it will be what finally gets built.
Well, yes, I know, I've heard that a few times.
Um, I think that becomes another asset for keeping the school open.
I agree, that's.
Another argument for.
That was the whole part of.
The uniqueness of what happens here.
Mm-hmm.
And that's, you know, a sell that we're often making.
Mm-hmm.
Um, yeah, I guess the only other thing that I was thinking about was that, you remember too, that even if it's decided not to be a school anymore and, you know, when everything's written, it comes back to the town for right of first refusal, the town would refuse to take that building back. But, you know, say the elevator is shut down, the town gets it back, well, we still have a shut down elevator that needs repairs, right? And whatever we wanna do with it, even as a town, for events or whatever, it's still gonna be an expense that. Yeah, those pickleballers, they're intense. Um, yeah, you know, so it probably makes more, it's probably more cost effective as a town to pitch in a little bit more here and have a larger tax base covering expense versus we as just a town covering this kind of expense.
Hmm.
Um.
Another place for that ten thousand dollars.
The, well, the, another little little bit of money is we put fifteen thousand dollars of ARPA money into the town building maintenance separate fund. And now we're not gonna, and that was for the roof on the town hall, and now we're not gonna need that because we're using some of that being. But that's, you know, fifteen thousand dollars is too much for.
You guys wanted any decision from us today, this is more giving us the information. And thank you both for doing that and for coming.
Yeah.
So is this another one, I mean, it it seems to come up every couple of years when we wonder whether we should have just sold it to the school district for a dollar.
Mm-hmm. Would make things, um, much less contentious, I know that for a fact, um, from my dealing with creating the lease. And dealing with the.
But for whatever reason, we hung on to it.
If this school was to close, Harvick can pick up our number of students out there without any problem?
No, which is another thing that people like to ignore.
Mm-hmm.
Um, there's not, from what I remember, last year or the year before, there is not actually enough space in Harvick to cover every student. Or there is, but it's like, we have a two-student window. Like, if two extra kids move in, well, now we don't have enough space. It's it's that type, yeah.
Interesting.
Yeah, yeah, and, you know, if you're not familiar with Act seventy-three, um.
Yeah, what's gonna happen?
It's a mess. And I, my personal and I'll say professional opinion is to, you know, hopefully it came up at the meet your legislator event, but I think we really need to harp on them when they get back in session this next year to reverse course.
Hmm.
Because they have that option. The masks come out in December and then legislature looks at it, I think it started in January, and they have the option to say, no, this doesn't make sense, let's just keep it the way it is.
Hmm.
That feels like the most logical course to me, but.
Yeah, I don't know.
You say.
I did ask them, did you vote on that, me?
I wasn't able to.
Okay, I did ask them, and I don't remember, I don't, didn't get a specific answer from each one as to whether or not they had had voted for it.
Yeah, that's something that I wanted to look up as well because there had to have been other Democratic legislative support for that initiative. And I'm not sure how our representatives voted.
Hmm.
I personally would give them quite a bit of grief if they voted for it.
Yeah, I know one said responded that he had voted for it to get it out of
Maybe.
Just the House and get it to the Senate, but then he, when there was overall vote, he didn't vote for it, I don't know. Or maybe he hoped that there was, the Senate was gonna vote it. I don't I don't remember how that all works.
So so we voted to make it somebody else's decision?
Yeah.
To take no responsibility. I don't appreciate that either, but.
You guys, thanks so much for for coming and.
Of course.
It's good to know.
And any other questions, and do you want me to send the information that we've gotten about, from the architect and whatnot?
That'd be awesome, yeah, if you don't mind, that'd be great.
Sure. I'm on the list, yeah.
Okay, and keep us posted, maybe as like, as more information is coming in.
Absolutely, yeah, I'm sure we're gonna be talking about it next month, especially, you know, budget season is upon us for for this, so.
Okay.
Oh. Alright.
And we've got a number of things to discuss and see what rates are gonna look like for next year.
Hmm. Hmm.
Thank you.
Thank you guys.
Thank you.
Absolutely.
Bob, you on a seat?
Whoa, they're hot.
Are you here?
You're welcome, press your down.
Alright.
Are you here for?
I was just interested in the, uh, the mats.
Oh, that's not happening tonight.
That's not happening?
No.
No, they wouldn't want, they didn't wanna come because it was a holiday or something or anything.
Right, they have a day off, so.
Next, next month, I think, we're gonna talk about that, we'll get to Michael's part of it, yeah.
Wow.
Sorry.
That's why it wasn't on the agenda, yeah.
Yeah, yeah. I guess my impression was that about half the towns in the state don't get zoning and now they're gonna have Act two zip fifty zoning.
Hmm.
And, uh, oh, boy, I wondered.
Yeah, the whole wildlife corridor thing, why didn't, did I go to some meeting about that or?
Oh, no, what I was seeing is it's not.
I think it was.
It's not ten houses now, and, uh, it's every house.
Yeah, if it's in a certain corridor, wildlife corridor or some, I don't know.
Uh.
So anyways.
It's tier three, which we are.
What?
The whole town pretty in the, in the, uh, tier three.
Yeah.
I think this meeting will take place, I can't remember when we're gonna put it on the calendar. Yeah, sometime in November, we'll decide that tonight, yeah.
Yeah.
Reschedule presentation from Regional Planning Commission on their mapping proposal.
I just didn't know enough to sign it.
Yeah, we kinda found out about the fact that.
Well, I'm glad you're interested because, yeah, Norman's interested in this too.
Yeah, I did call him, but, um, this is true.
Bob, it's nice to see you.
Yeah, you should have looked at your agenda online. Just kidding.
Online?
Yeah.
Yeah, from which one?
On the, on the.
Oh, that's computer stuff.
Yeah, on the, the website, it's on the website, bye.
You know what I mean?
I do, I do, I feel your pain.
See you later.
Have a good night.
Good night. So we're gonna move on to monthly auditors report, John, thanks for coming, um, and some website information as well.
Try to make this as brief as Bob Martin's. So, uh, starting this month, you'll get a monthly, uh, report from the auditors or an auditor saying that the reconciliation, uh, has been reviewed and the bank statements and the credit card statements have been reviewed. And this kind of wraps up, um, the recommendation that was made by the professional auditors two or three years ago.
Hmm.
And it's been done in different iterations, even going back, uh, before that. Tom Beers, who was the town treasurer, uh, does the monthly reconciliation with either the checking account transactions and, uh, what's been done in memory in the software and reconciles that, uh, which is a big piece of it.
Hmm.
And, uh, then I think some of that's gone to the select board, uh, previously. Um, and so what the auditor said was that should go through a different chain than the way the money is spent. So that's the point of having the auditor, just look at it and, uh, review it and then I'll send you the other, get a letter that says we reviewed it. So, um, no actions needed by the select board. Um, and, uh, thank you, Willie, for making it easy to do this. And, um, anything you wanna add to that?
Um, no, I don't, I don't think so. Um, it's just nice to know there are checks and balance on what's being done in the office and makes that well-rounded report, monthly report.
So, John, can you remind me, there is at least one other auditor than you?
So there are two other auditors.
Two others, yeah?
Uh, yeah.
Okay.
And.
This process, they've gone through it as well?
They have not.
Okay.
Um, we will be meeting soon to kinda go over it and view your things and I'll bring them up to date on that. Which is why the letter that I sent to you, sent to you says, an auditor.
Yeah.
He just likes the select board for official action that takes two out of three auditors.
Got it, yeah.
But this is just considered, this is not considered something you have to decide on, this is just work. I mean, this is just administrative work, right?
It's just saying another set of laws.
Good practice.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Not that it's not important.
Anything on the audit? So website, um, a couple of things, um, so, as I mentioned in the email to you, I think that, you know, there's some things where, that fall into a gray area and there's a difference between what we could put on the website and what we ought to put on the website. And, you know, early days of the web was, let's put everything there. Um, I think, you know, now as the web is more mature, um, we're more nuanced in saying what should be there. And the, uh, example that I mentioned was the Grand List, which I thought, you know, other towns put it on the website, I thought it was a good idea to do that, and then I looked at it after I put it together, I was like, holy smokes, this is just a screamers dream.
Hmm.
And it's not, you know, just the fact that the information's out there, but it's a aggregate. So you got, you know, instead of having to search eight hundred places to get town addresses, look one place in there, it's all there. So it's definitely a public document, the Grand List, but it's that requirement is, which we met by the community bill or the town office, not putting it on the website, so.
Plus, it's so out of date, if people start looking at that, I mean, they can look at it, they can go in the office and look at it anytime, but if they're tempted to do it online and they start looking at their neighbors and their other neighbors and and the prices are so, I mean, like, they're twenty years old.
Yep, so, you know, as we continue to build out content, if we see stuff, if I see stuff in the gray area like that, I'll bring it to your attention.
I didn't like that, uh, thing where you could ask a question. Did you, I think somebody used that one time and it was pretty confusing, you remember that one?
On the website?
Yeah, a question, random question came to you. It said, ask a question, somebody put that on there. It's a function, not just a road question, but a.
There's a contact form.
Well, it's.
Oh, yeah, that would make sense, ask a question and it delivers a message to some of the offices?
So if you fill out the contact form, um, which could be your question, then, um, that goes to, I believe it goes to you, Robin, thing. Yeah, 'cause you've gotten one, actually, we actually got one, I found it too.
Yeah, there was one.
So, yeah.
And the contact form is just like asking to be contacted or what is?
It's, it's, uh, alternative, so you're sending an email. They don't, they have to go into an email program, they can say, my name is blah blah blah, here's my home number, here's my email address, here's my, your question or comment, push a button.
Got it.
It goes, I'm pretty sure, I know it goes to you, 'cause we, we, uh, we found one one day that needed to get poured, I can't remember what it was about.
Yeah, I do remember too, and I, and that's when I realized that that function was on there and that I didn't think it was very useful, 'cause it's gonna just cause confusion. I mean, all our email addresses are on there, including the selectboard.org. If people have the facility to, uh, use the website, that means they also have email.
Yes.
I don't know, it was just confusing.
It's, it's a common thing on websites for people to either, either to use a contact form or an email. Um, it's certainly something we could take off, but the fact that we've only gotten one, I think, um, says it's probably not causing, probably not helping a lot, but probably not hurting much either, so.
And it's easy to check, like, does it go, does it go directly to your email?
Is that the one that came into the select board?
Uh, so, it, you know.
Because if it's the one that came into the select board, you've rerouted those to the select board now.
Right, I I didn't reroute it, but, um.
Somebody did.
But, um, the one that I'm talking about, I'm pretty sure went to you, it's not that. But I'll check, uh, I'll take a look at it tomorrow.
I'll have to see what I can find.
Hmm.
I guess my only concern would be if it gets used really infrequently, if it's a place that you have to go specially to check it. You know what I mean, if it's something that isn't in.
It's not.
Okay, yeah.
If it just gets poured, yeah.
Yeah, okay, cool.
Um, and I think that's pretty much it, the, um, you know, to, um, coming up on the website is building out some more content, um, going, simplifying some of the procedures and passing those off to town office. And, um, and still an open question as to whether Viper will be part of the town website or not, still working that long.
They have their own website?
They do.
Really?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, and that's it.
So you've been looking at a lot of town, other town websites, do you think ours looks, looks nice compared to the other ones?
I would say ours is in the eighty-fifth percentile.
Really?
Yeah.
No kidding, okay.
Yeah, no, it's quite good.
Hmm.
Um, and I don't wanna take up a ton of time, but in your opinion, Ben maybe could, um, take on, this is going back to that early conversation about RB Tech, could maybe take on all of that, those services that RB Tech? Or would it be like some portion of it that we could reduce our reliance on RB Tech? Or or maybe you're not prepared to an- answer that question?
Yeah, there's one piece of it that I'm not sure if he's got the experience, which is keeping track of the, uh, and updating the network equipment, the stuff that's down in the basement.
Yeah.
In terms of updating the software, updating the PCs, making sure that they have the soc, uh, security patches and stuff like that, absolutely.
But that was something, that was part of what RB Tech, that's what we're paying these RV technology people to do, is update a.
Yeah.
Security, yeah, I think, I mean, all the trouble has gone into working with these RV technology in the last year. I don't really think it's time to start messing with that. I mean, yeah, it's expensive, but we signed on to it.
Well, we do have a standard contract that does that, that it's the remote consulting that takes us out. You know, the second, like I said, the second we call somebody, have a question, ask a question, need a quick update, it's, you know, upwards of a hundred and seventy-five bucks depending, which is a lot of money for smaller, seemingly smaller questions.
And so those kinds of independent cons, or you know, like, um, when we have some, need somebody come problem solve,
Hmm.
that has to be done by RB because they're managing the entire system, do you suppose? Or is that something that could be farmed out to somebody that isn't a hundred and seventy-five bucks an hour?
My, I, I would assume we could have additional help from someone who isn't RB Tech and maybe have them be the first phone call before we go to RB Tech, um, but I would have to look into it.
So you wouldn't have to look at your contract?
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah.
But you know, you see, a lot of questions go to Skip or Wayne, and if they can't handle them, then they say, call RB Tech.
Well, my, my experience is that.
Or John.
Increasingly, those kind of phone calls are getting referred to RB Tech. Number one, and number two, they've got a pretty firm grip, RB Tech.
Yeah.
So there's not a lot you can do without going through them.
Yeah.
Hmm, yeah, they couldn't even give us, couldn't even get our free, our new emails without going through that.
I think you're probably looking at either them. I think you're probably looking at either them or knockdown.
Yeah.
It's not some hybrid situation, okay. All right, thanks.
Thank you.
All right, we're back to Michael.
Okay, so the rescheduling of the CVR PC to, for them to share the, the new land use map that they're developing for the regional plan, obviously it didn't happen tonight. So I think Brian Voight proposed that the first meeting in November, I think it's November tenth, would work for him.
And...
When's Veterans Day?
Uh huh?
When's Veterans Day?
Three eleven.
Okay.
At least on this calendar, it's, it's in the Tuesday. I think they don't change that.
Okay.
So that, is that our reg, November tenth is our regular schedule?
That's our first, first meeting of the month, yeah.
And that's the...
I think, I don't have a calendar, I mean, I'm remembering that it was November tenth, but, and I don't have a calendar, so. And it can be some other time too, if, if, if you don't want to deal with it then.
Can you explain to these guys a little bit about what it's about? Because I know they only wanted to have ten minutes.
Well, I think they're definitely looking for input on, on this map from the different towns. I mean, they're, they're going to every town and sharing the proposed land use map and then getting input from the towns.
And this has to do with the new law that was passed year before last on...
I have no idea what it has to do with, but the CVR PC, they also create, I mean, we create a town plan, they create a regional plan. And they're working on doing that, it's kind of overdue, long overdue. So, and you know, we, you have a land use map with our town plan. So what they're want to present and basically have a hearing on is the proposals for the changes in the regional land use map. They, that's my understanding.
Oh, well, that's not what I understood, okay. I thought they were talking about the, the tier three business with the new Act two fifty rules that, I thought it was part of the Regional Planning Commission's duty under that law that they come up with these mapping suggestions that showed, oh, wetlands and wildlife corridors and things like that.
Well, that could be true, you know, I, I, I'm trying to not deal a whole lot with that stuff anymore, so, so my understanding. I could check with Brian about that and just to get a sense of what is actually gonna happen. He's just mentioned to me the land use map, so I don't know whether it has to do with tier three or whatever that is and all of that other stuff that planners love.
Michael, with the land use map that the Regional Planning Commission comes up with, how does that correlate with possible rezoning? Like, that map they create won't be able to, that won't limit people from building currently unless the town were to take up some...
No, I mean, probably not the best person to ask this question, but the land use maps basically are a guide. You know, like, I know there's an issue with, with the land use project that they're trying to do. They just passed a new town plan and there were a number of commissioners on the Regional Planning Commission that raised some objections to that based on land use maps and traffic and, you know, all the stuff that the more urban areas have to deal with. So they felt that the regional plan, that the modular town plan didn't align with the regional town, regional plan. So that's when these things, like a land use map. So, you know, if, and, you know, we haven't done anything with zoning from the new town plan.
But that's the purpose of it, right? Like this would, I guess, like my interpretation of this is that this would be like a very early stage of potentially sort of chunking up the area into like, you know, what areas that can be built in, areas that can't be built in.
I mean, that's still, that's, that's already kind of happened.
Yeah, yeah.
Well, if it's the regular map of the Regional Planning Commission, that doesn't have any input. I mean, that doesn't have any authority...
No.
Over the towns. But if it is this thing that they're doing because of trying to comply with the Act two fifty, it could, uh, could place a lot more restrictions on building in Woodbury.
Okay, I'm just kind of thinking, like, I, I hadn't really, I guess, absorbed what this was until tonight, but it seems like something that, like, more people in the town would potentially be interested in participating in.
Yeah, I think there are people in town, I mean, I'm aware of a few people, but, yeah. So, I mean, and so do we want to, you know, do you want to have a select board meeting? Kind of, you know, a big chunk of a select board meeting to do this? Or it could be a special town meeting?
It might be nice to, maybe at the next meeting, we could invite Norman to come and explain what he knows about it.
Yeah, Norman would know much more about, I mean, I, I just don't have the head for this stuff. And I don't have a real interest in it.
And if he was, and if he came and explained enough to you guys so that we or whoever's watching on TV could know about it, then maybe more people would show up to the next meeting, which is gonna be on the tenth.
Okay.
Okay.
That makes sense.
Yeah, I don't know, it kind of seems like a big, like an important topic.
It is.
So there's time to get back to Brian about...
There's time.
Yeah, okay, great.
But we can schedule for the tenth.
If you would like to, yeah. Or you, we could make it a tentative date, or we could just say we haven't really figured out, you know, how we, how we want to...
Let's put it, make it tentative, I mean, we already had a tentative and he canceled, so.
Right.
We'll try one more.
So tentatively, it's scheduled for eleven-ten, but we'll have, hopefully, Norman come in for the next meeting.
Yeah, which would be...
To discuss with us.
And I could, I could...
Twenty, the twenty-seventh, actually.
Ten-twenty-seven?
And I could try to clarify with Brian Voight just what the purpose of, you know, having...
Thank you, that'd be good.
Yeah, if it is, I haven't heard anything about it being related to Act two fifty or any of the new changes in that at all, so.
Thanks, Mike.
Okay, so the other thing, a little bit more nuts and bolts here. So the Emergency Watershed Protection Program, the grant that we received from them to address the washout issues on Buck Lake Brook that affect or could affect and have affected in the past, Cabot Road. That was, the grant agreement expired and will expire December thirty-first, twenty-twenty-five. And at the, because of different situations, the USDA, NRCS, the National Resource Conservation Service, which is part of USDA, haven't, haven't done any work on the project that's part of any of the design work or et cetera. And so technically, even though the town is not at fault for not having this done, we are being asked to request an extension to December thirty-first, twenty-twenty-six. It's kind of a formality, so that we're still, you know, in the running for this project. So, and it needs to be signed by the select board chair. And as soon as we can get that in, then we're, you know, still in the running for this if we want to be. So I have, I have a copy of it here. I don't know if I sent it to you all, I think I might have, but, um, sometimes...
So I saw this, I think today, I think this is what I saw.
They gave you the language?
Yeah, they gave me the language, yeah. Yeah, it was basically written by CVR PC. They're kind of co, they're helping with this project.
Assuming you guys want me to sign it?
I mean, I, I question the timeline that's there right now. You know, they're, they're not really even gonna be getting the design work to us until sometime next summer.
You posed that question, did they respond to it?
I haven't, I think Brian Voight has been on vacation. I haven't received any response from him at all about it.
Oh, that's a pretty tight time, huh?
Yeah, it is.
Can you cross it out and just change the date?
Well, we can get another extension, I guess, for the, but this'll, this'll keep us going. That's it on my list, thank you guys.
Thanks, Michael.
So just very quickly, you know, I know we've kind of wondering, well, how are we gonna pay the town's match for this? And also, how are we gonna pay the town match plus for the culvert project that, here in the village? And I'm just...
Which is not that much, I mean, it's like ten percent or something?
Well, it's a hundred thousand dollars.
Well, that's right, it's the more...
Because of the limit, the two hundred thousand dollar limit. I haven't, I haven't got a response from Nate Seacart about how much he thought the expense would go up. But my guess is that it, you know, it was seventy-five, so a hundred is kind of a ballpark figure based on no knowledge on my part about... So I think as you're doing budget work and, and also, you know, looking at that pot of mitigation money that's designated for projects.
But can't be used for projects that are...
Yeah, the, the one here, we can't use it for.
Oh, but this one's got this, yeah, okay.
So we've got to figure out, you know, how, how would the town pay its match on that? Which is about, if I remember right, around twenty-five thousand dollars. That's the highest thing, now that ten thousand dollars, well, that's part of it. So we've got to, you know, I think as you're working on the budget, the, this would qualify as state money. And we could use some of that mitigation or use that for the town's paying of the balance, I'm gonna call it. It's not, it's, we'd be way above our match by the other grants.
If there's money left.
So I just wanted to, I don't, we don't need to discuss it, I just thought I'd throw that out there that there are these two projects that will require the town to come up with some money towards them.
Imagine you'll help us remember that as we get into the budgeting.
Sure.
Thank you. All right, that's it, Michael?
Yes, that's it.
Alfie, all right, I'll let you the road commissioner's report.
Okay, should be fairly brief. Sand pile's done, we've got our three thousand merit allotment for the contract, so that's finished. I don't know, did we get a bill invoice from that yet?
I have not seen it yet, no.
Okay, well, it's, no rush, but, but anyway, our part is done, it's all in our pile, it's mounted up quite well.
Very impressive, yes.
Yeah, yeah, I think we'll have enough, for sure. The new truck is scheduled to be here end of next week. Yes, so pretty excited about that, should be all ready to go. I talked to the salesman today and he had a couple of questions about locations of cameras. The truck has cameras on it, so you can see what's going on in the body and you can see what's going on behind the truck. Sort of a safety feature, so. Talked with him today and he's telling me end of next week, we should be able to go pick it up.
We gonna have money?
Yeah.
I made her aware also today.
Not on you.
She give you the credit card?
Yeah, right, right. So what I gotta find out is whether they, if I need to go there with a check or it needs to be paid for first before I pick it up. I don't know how that sequence will go, but I'll let you know for sure. Last week or so, a couple of weeks, we've been working on trucks, getting them ready for winter, putting plows on. They all need to be inspected, so I'm working on that process.
Is the, like, basically carport, you got started last year so that you can, that's all done, ready to go?
That's done, ready to go, yeah, yeah. So we'll be able to put the salt truck in there and keep it loaded all the time. So it's just get in it and go put salt and then keep it undercover, yeah. Just wanted to let everybody know, Peter Bailey is gonna be out for vacation for two weeks, give or take, starting next, next week. He's got a couple, a hunting trip to go, a couple hunting trips, I guess is what I should say it, so. I think he deserves it and timing's not great, but you gotta go hunting when the hunting's good, so.
It's not snowing, so.
It's not snowing, right. That's right, when the season is in, right.
So if you have to go get the truck, you can take Tim with you?
Yes, yes, we'll, we'll find a way for that, for sure. But, yeah, other than that, unless there's questions about roads, I mean, we've been grading where we can when the weather's right. Peter worked last Friday overtime to get a little more done. And mostly, like I said, the last couple of weeks, we've been working on trucks, getting stuff ready, so.
Got a question.
Sure.
Um, so you had mentioned, once we get the new trucks, selling the one that it's replacing, correct?
Uh, no.
No, okay.
No, we have a, we have a six-wheeler, which we call the forty-nine hundred. That's the one I want to get rid of.
Okay.
Is that the one we just bought last year?
No, 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 that's, that's the five-fifty.
Okay, okay.
This is an international that we've had for many years.
Oh, that really old one.
It's very old, it should not be on the road, quite honestly.
It's not the one you're just keeping for a spare?
Right, no, we're keeping the two thousand fourteen ten-wheeler for a spare.
Is this the one that went off the Cabot Road? This forty-nine hundred?
That was the replacement for that, the accident that happened years ago.
Yeah.
This truck replaced that, that wrecked one. Since then, we've changed the motor and whatever. We took the motor out, the wrecked one, and put it into this one and so, you know, it's kind of been piecemeal. And this truck is old, it shouldn't...
Are we done with that?
We should be relieved of that liability, really is what it is. And so that's why I'm gonna try to sell that one as soon as the new truck comes.
Where, where does that money, where has that money historically gone when we sell it? Would it go back into the herf?
Go to the herf, that's where money comes out of when we buy. So we have two, two items that we're gonna do that with. The old, the old equipment trailer that we've already replaced and this dump truck. Will go, as soon as I get a chance, I'll get them down, maybe at the town office, park somewhere out of the way with a sign on them or something like that. And maybe we can throw an advertisement out just to see what we can get for some money refund out of it. I wouldn't expect a lot, but, you know, if we get anything, it'd be, and if we get something out of it, I think it's worth trying that rather than have it just sit in the yard and take up space. So that's sort of where we are there. The only other thing that we set out to do, which we still may, is the bathroom remodel. Which, if, you know, in between storms or something, that may still be able to happen. I know Michael and I have talked about the East Hill project and I would love to try to get that done if time allows and if Mother Nature does... And if Mother Nature doesn't, you know, throw dandruff around too soon. But that's, I wanna get the trucks ready, I want that to be, everything to be all set.
Let me guess what that East Hill project is?
It's, it's just above where we did a grant last summer, a grant project. And this is where the flooding event washed out, made the existing brook much bigger. And so it's starting to undermine the road.
Yep.
And it's also changing, replacing a culvert that is deemed too small. So it would be mitigation, it would be from that mitigation money, if we can get to it. So that's, it's sort of pending, but it really depends on the weather and time and all that. I just wanted to stop projects after we got those two grants done, I wanted to stop and get the trucks ready. Just so that we're ready to go in event something happens.
Is he still taking that sharp corner up there?
That's what Alfie's talking about.
Just around that sharp corner to the left, if you're going up the hill, it's on the left. It's, yeah.
The flooding made that big ditch.
Yeah, yeah. Essentially, it would be filling that ditch in with big stone and then replacing the culvert at the bottom of that. Yeah, the flooding totally, it just kept making it bigger and bigger. It wasn't, you know, it wasn't bad enough so that we had to do it during the repair mode. But since we got this money and it's, it was caused by the flood, I, we all felt like it should be, it should be trying to get it, get it done. Not to mention the safety of traffic coming around, you know, they're coming around the corner and they got trucks and you got-
School buses.
School buses, so, which, speaking of school buses, we have a, a new driver on East Hill now. So, just saying. I, I know her quite well, so I'm sure that it's all gonna be fine, but it's just... So we'll have to pay a little more attention on East Hill for that.
Cool, it'd be great if the weather holds out and you guys are able to get to that.
Yeah, 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 yeah. Which typically, I mean, last year, we didn't, we didn't get any snow, anything until Thanksgiving. I mean, we stayed on our summer schedule until Thanksgiving, so if that happens again, there's a pretty good chance that we can get to it. No promises, but we are gonna try.
So I think Diana handed you, what is the-
Todd Walker application for putting a ditch in the middle of the road, I mean, putting a pipe in the middle of the road. You can just, there's a small description there, it just says the length.
Did Dexter fill that up?
Yes. Did you make copies on that application?
For Todd Walker?
For anybody, the new application that I came up with for, for work within the road right of way?
Yes, I have some of it at the office.
Okay.
Yeah.
I mean, I might have not sent it to you.
I don't know, does it require your signature or is it a-
Well, it-
It's a spot for me to make comments.
Yeah.
Or the person sitting in the seat. So I'm actually been hired to do this work in my private world. So should I re- recuse myself from the signature or?
Maybe only if one of us thinks that there's a possible, you know, what do you call it, conflict?
Or, or a perceived, yeah.
Right, I think it's a little bad.
Yeah, we'll sign it.
Yeah, I mean, just this one. If, if another one comes and I'm, you know, I, I just feel like if I am, if I'm doing the work, I shouldn't be signing off on it. Or making the comments that is required. I can pass those-
We still need your opinion that it's okay.
Yes, it is. I'll make sure it's okay.
I mean, that's reassuring, too.
So one, one thing that, that I'm in hopes of being able to do on this project is to line bore it. So I won't be actually digging the, the road up. I'll have access on one side and another on the other, and then this drill will go under the road. And so then, so it gets away from compaction and, you know, traffic and all that, all those issues.
And is it a flexible line then?
It is. It's a, it's a plastic light pi- pipe that you can fuse a regular fitting to on each end.
But it, if you get any turn in there, it must be flexible enough to make-
So he drills first, drills through it first, and then he, after his drill is through, he pulls the line back. And then you've got a two inch line underground that we can then hook to for the force main, yeah. That's very, very interesting. Who's doing the drilling?
Yeah.
Corky Morse?
Is it like a company, is there a company?
It's a company, oh yeah, yeah. They do it all over the-
I was looking into it at one point, that's why I was curious.
Yeah, yeah, no, it's very interesting. I've, and I've used him for several years now on different projects. I've done a septic in Berlin where we had to go underneath the road.
Like pavement or whatever?
Under pavement, right, and they had just paved the road just before this project, so it was like, there's no way they're gonna let me dig that up, you know, so. So that's my hope, I, I don't know for sure if that's gonna work, but I, that's what I'm working on, to get that scheduled. So-
Why don't you just pass that back and we'll sign it and send it on to Dexter?
So who's, are you gonna sign it for Alfie or do we all?
We all get to sign it. Okay, so if there's any questions, they'll have to call me because somebody will read my name.
Another good reason to sign that name, I think.
Nate, we're- So-
Make that really legible, Diana.
So, let's see, there's no permit fee because we don't have a tax fee scheduled yet, so I'll just put N A on here. We'll put permit number one. Date received ten, I think I came up with twelve yesterday. No, yesterday was Sunday, so I'll put thirteen. Marshall number, tax map number, we don't have that yet, so. So... I guess I'll send this to him then.
Should we keep a copy of that at the office, though?
Yeah, yeah, definitely. Maybe start a new file called Work in Public Right of Way Application.
Yeah, no, I think you're probably gonna, as development comes, you're gonna have more-
Copy of this actual thing?
Yeah, no, that's what I mean, yeah. She already told me she has blank copies. In the new form that the town of Eastmont Hillier kindly gave me. With her fancy software that allowed me to change the name. So once he has that, well, Dexter will do what he has to do with that, I guess.
Yeah, I mean, there shouldn't be any more action for the select board.
And that's supposed to happen for the end of the year?
Supposed to, yeah.
Roadway or culverts, eighteen inch, that doesn't matter, driveway culvert, underdrain, six inch minimum diameter of metal. PVC plaster for polyethylene pipe, is that what?
Polyethylene is the pipe that we're using, yeah.
Okay, so I guess those restrictions came with the form, yeah. So there's nothing on this side that really needs to be.
All right, I'm gonna move this on to the next thing, the status of the employee search. Have we had, I know, I feel like we were told we had one applicant before. Still just one applicant?
Nope, we got another one, actually, two today.
Two today, so we have a total of three.
Well, Danny Hale inquired about it. He was gonna call you, present.
Yeah, well, I always get voicemails from that.
I didn't read this copy of-
I don't believe so. All right, so maybe he will. So we have, so that, was this gentleman Danny Hale, was he one of the three that was-
Yes.
Okay, so he hasn't applied yet, or he hasn't, but-
Correct, he was gonna call you.
Got it.
So actual applications, we have two.
Actual applications, we have two, okay.
Do you wanna do this in executive session or?
I think that that makes sense to, I think the only thing we might wanna decide is if we wanna hold interviews, like, schedule a date. We do that in public meeting.
Which, the interviews or the scheduling of the interview?
The scheduling of the interviews. I think that maybe it's worthwhile looking at dates right now, to see if we can... And we probably maybe need to offer a couple different dates to do that. Couple different opportunities.
Oh, yeah, definitely. If we wanna consider, I mean, we should, we should also consider whether they all need to have an application. They don't, all deserve to have an interview or do that, I mean-
Okay, they might, you're saying, okay. Would it be, would it make sense to try to schedule an interview for, for two next week?
One of them's gonna be on vacation for two weeks.
Oh, right, that's a good point.
Yeah.
Yep. Well, maybe that, maybe we see if we can schedule one for next week and then one for the first week in November?
The sooner the better, is what I'm gonna say. If you're looking at me, that's what I'm gonna say, sooner.
But it's a good point that at least one of those applicants is gonna be away for the next two weeks, so.
Starting when?
Uh, next week, Monday.
So like if we did one potentially this week, I don't know, is that too soon?
Yeah, does it, does it have to be, interviews don't have to be at a regular scheduled meeting.
No.
Well, we have to warn it if all of us are gonna be here, right?
Oh, right.
Yeah, sure.
Can we do more than one in that, in that meeting, just to sort of-
We could try that.
I didn't know it makes sense, I mean, for me, it would make my life easier.
Space them out by, you know, you know, put people right on top of each other, but if you had one-
So they have to look at each other when they're waiting?
If we did one at six-
I, I can save them experience, that's a difficult thing.
We did one at six and one at seven, I mean, that would be enough time in between. Do you wanna try to do that for this week?
I could, I mean, I would give us a hint of warrant, right, if we did it like Thursday or Friday?
Maybe Thursday would be better, Friday's probably a tough day to do an interview, Friday at six.
Why do I feel like there's nothing in my calendar? Guess I'll get it on Thursday.
What do you think, Diane?
Uh, let's see, it's thirteen, so we could try for like the sixteen.
We're seeing six o'clock?
We don't, could we have one at five and one at six?
I can do five thirty, probably is the earliest that could be here. All right, so that would mean-
You were hoping Alfie would come too, right?
I think so, yeah.
If you want me there.
I think that that makes sense, yeah.
Yeah.
You'd have some insight and maybe some, you know, be able to explain like what that job is, you know?
Yeah. In the past, I've had a list of questions for interviews. I don't know if I could grab that or not, if I could pull that up somewhere. You know, it was just a list of basic questions that I asked everybody at the same time as I was hiring.
Yeah. I think it'd be great, if you get a chance and it's digital, maybe it's not digital, I'd love to see it, too.
Yeah, it's not digital, but I might be able to make it digital.
Scan it or something, yeah. Okay, that'd be great.
Yeah. So are we talking, did we decide on five thirty or six?
Five, five thirty okay with you?
Yeah, five thirty.
Five thirty Thursday. I mean, this is all depending that they can-
Right.
Right.
They can accommodate that schedule and then-
Should we do, I'd like to do, can we do this one first? He's coming from farther away. Not that it's that far, ten miles, but-
It doesn't matter to me. Sure, I'm happy to call that person. Five thirty, and then, what, say six thirty, just to give everybody a little bit of space?
Okay.
Sure.
Yeah.
Yep.
Six thirty for the other one, and-
Don't waste your time on Danny Hale.
So, well, we're gonna call-
If we get another application.
Should the same person-
I'll call both, yeah.
I'm totally wondering if one person can't do one time, then maybe we can plop and it's easier.
Totally, I'll do that.
Okay, thank you. I feel that you're doing a lot of phone calls. Do you want me to take one of, any of your other calls over?
Nope.
Okay, cool.
Yes, I do. You wanna call John Gord?
Yeah, I will, yeah.
That'd be awesome. All right, so. And that's in regard to being a CBRPC mutual aid agreement, yeah.
Lizzie, that, that should be in your email too, from me, if you wanna send, if you ask for it. Oh, okay, okay, thank you.
Alfie, you don't have Pete's contact information handy, do you? Can you share that with me at some point?
Yeah, yeah, I got it in my phone, for sure.
That'd be great. If you could share it with me, that'd be great.
Yeah.
Thank you. All right.
I didn't print out his application, but he did, we did, you did send us the application, right, so.
Okay, so we have it as-
Send it somewhere.
Send an email? All right. If you don't mind sending it.
Yeah, no, I could.
Thank you. I think that's it, and we can talk about the details, the individuals in an executive session. So the open late bid for the basement waterproofing, I guess I had a question about that, you know, we only received one bid, it came in late.
I think the bidding process is, is out the window at that point.
It is.
We wanna hire him for something.
Sure.
We wanna look at what he said and-
Yep.
Robin made copies.
There's three copies and the original is still right there, too.
Thanks, Sarah.
So that's for you. Keep that one.
Well, that's for me?
Yeah.
I'll have these right here. This is a new program for this day to get out for us.
Did I not give you one?
Uh, I think that one, this is the bid.
This is the bid.
Okay.
Whoa. I went right to the bottom, I mean.
Yes, I see this.
So, um, Diana, the bid was late, but it's the only bid that came in, is that?
That's right. It was like a week late.
I have reservations about the work that they're recommending.
Yeah.
Um, so, I'm no expert in any of this, but where, I think the water is mostly coming in through the cracks in the bulkhead. And this doesn't address that at all, but it addresses a bunch of stuff that I, I feel like might be overkill.
Yeah, I, I'm sorry I didn't get a chance to explain to the guy where the water came in. It was through the wall, through a hole in the wall, over by where the septic tank is. And Robin's, somebody, son-in-law or something came and, and plugged it up. I mean, yeah, there's sure some that drains down through the stairway in the bulkhead, but.
Yeah, I guess I don't know where the septic tank is, is that near?
Well, it's right in the corner next to the elevator shaft.
Oh, okay, okay.
Right next to the building.
It's got one of those nice green covers over the top of it.
Yeah, it's got a couple, yeah, risers.
Okay.
Yeah, so that's.
So, that's where it usually, I guess I thought it was coming in the bulkhead, but it's coming in.
Some of it hasn't been coming in the bulkhead.
Yeah.
I'm sure some drains down there.
Okay.
Every year.
I didn't really look at it very closely, so.
I'll give it back, you can take it back.
No, I can look at it together. So, we're gonna put something, right?
Right under the floor, place the drain with crushed stones surrounding it. And some pit would have closed something beneath by the race. Pit boss combo backup system, this charges off the sill plate and will tide of a four-inch exterior drain right outside the sill, away from the house.
So, basically, it's perimeter drainage in the basement?
I, yeah, underneath, I guess they, where they dig it out, I was gonna be under and place it underneath the existing floor, is what it sounds like to me.
There's a trench out right under the floor, then place the drain. Yeah, I think they basically just, uh, cut the concrete floor out.
Oh, I was thinking they did it from outside, 'cause they said trench it, but you think they cut it from the same?
On full perimeter of the basement, maybe it's in the outside.
I think it's the outside.
That's the outside?
Really? You think it?
They said, they could call it an interior drain though.
Yeah, it sounds like it.
You know, like, if you look under description, install interior drain tile.
Right.
Trench right under the floor.
Maybe they trench under it.
And then place the drain with crushed.
Pipe or stone and then, and then put this inside, so that it has somewhere to drain to. So, hi, I'm like never in the office, but like how much, how much water comes in, I'm, aside from when it flooded during the flood?
Yeah, a little bit. Yeah, sometimes there's a couple inches over by the door, by the, um, by the bulkhead door. But nothing like that there were.
And that was not, that was from a burst pipe, right? That, the floodwater.
Yeah, I don't know where that whole came from, how that went up there that wasn't plugged, but.
Alfie knows.
You do?
Yeah, well, I was there during, during the flood and I went out in and the, the sewer line got broke.
Oh.
Where it comes out of the house and is supposed to go to the tank.
Oh, okay.
So, that's where the majority of our water came in.
That's why Granny said it sounded like, smelled like sewer water.
Exactly, exactly. That was, that was where the majority, I think, the majority of that water came from. I think that a lot of this could be alleviated by the outside, just a little bit of work around the outside.
Yeah, he didn't recommend that at all.
In that corner where the septic system is, that has got negative drainage, so all the water is just running right towards the foundation. A little topsoil, a little pick that up, get the water to drain away, is going to take care of that. I mean, when we talked about doing the foundation, I thought we were gonna do the perimeter around the outside and make it run to the storm water, the state storm water.
When, when we.
They're talking about pumps and.
Yeah, and this, I think this is all interior. I think that they're digging up, that they're cutting the floor out.
Yeah, they're cutting the floor out and putting a.
'Cause then they, 'cause at the end here, they say.
Sump pump in there also?
Yeah.
Oh, okay, yeah.
They say after your drain tile system has been installed, it is recommended to leave fresh concrete exposed for a period of no less than thirty days to allow the concrete to cure.
The liner will be surrounded by.
Pouring more concrete. I guess we just need to call and ask.
Right?
Yeah.
That, that whole idea of a French drain around the back, I think that was Skip's idea on yours.
I feel like I have reservations about this remedy.
I do too.
Either way, but I can certainly call him.
Wanna find out which what?
Yeah, 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 yeah.
Great. Thank you.
Great drain perimeter drain, so what are you gonna do?
I'm gonna just get clarification about exactly what their proposal is.
This wasn't clear?
I mean, I think Chris and I have opposite understandings of it, so we wanna.
Really?
Have the same understanding.
It says, TSBS proposes to install the great drain TM system approximately one sixty-six feet around the full perimeter of the basement. Yeah, that's where it's like confusing to be interior or exterior, but.
They're going under.
He did not talk about going around the side of the building where the house is.
He did, right?
No, he did not.
No, but when he visited that day, he did. He talked about, um, doing a, uh,
We walked around.
Curtain drain in the eaves around the, when we walked around the outside, honestly, he talked about it at the time, but I don't see it in there.
No, I don't.
So.
We will trench out right under the floor, then place the drain with crushed stones surrounding it. TSBS proposes to install a sump pit with a closed sump liner basin. This will be equipped with a pit boss combo backup system. That means it all has to be like electrified, right, with?
'Cause it's a pump.
Yeah.
Yeah, so if the power's out and they.
Power, it's, yeah, it's, uh.
Well, I think it's worthwhile, if Liz, since she doesn't mind calling, we can just get clarification and then we can, we can figure out actually what they're proposing. Um, we can approve bills and payroll orders later, um, but we probably should schedule a time to meet with attorneys regarding Swenson. And did you wanna do that at something other than a select board meeting?
Yeah.
Okay. And how soon were you thinking we should?
Um.
Get together to do that?
I was thinking maybe on a Monday night when we don't have a meeting, like, maybe next Monday night, which would be the twentieth.
I think I can do that.
I can do that.
We'll have to see whether they're available.
Okay.
Say tentatively then.
Do you wanna offer up the twentieth and if they can't do it, then we'll go to the third?
Okay.
Can you do the third?
Yep.
Oh, that's a good idea, yeah. We just don't know when the Act Two Fifty, um, application might be complete and warned and a hearing scheduled.
Okay.
So, we wanna make sure, get them some knowledge of what we want and talk about what we want before then.
Okay.
Diana, do you know if all of the, um, yeah, those people, Skip and Jonah and all of them have looked at the information?
They have. We had a meeting there.
Okay, so I'm gonna set it in the vault then, instead of making it on the bookcase.
Okay, well, you know, but it's also, yeah, well, anybody else could look at it too if they.
I, I missed.
But, but they'll have to do it when you're open, so, yeah, so that's fine. Thank you.
I have no question. Um, so, we as a town have a right to kind of ask for something with Act Two Fifty?
Yeah.
Residents themselves have a right?
Some do, yeah.
Okay, so if they're, they're living on Cabot Road, they would have a right to kind of go to.
They can come to a hearing, they can request party status by showing that there is a potential impact on them. I, I don't know how clear the party status rules are anymore, but I know that that's what all this thing is about. That's why they're having a hearing.
Okay. You wouldn't necessarily have to live on Cabot Road, right? Like, if you could see it, if, right, I'm just, I'm asking, 'cause I'm not sure, like,
Oh, right.
Pretty much if it could in any way impact your property noise levels, miserable?
Yeah, you'd have to show something, you know, like.
Yeah, okay.
There was one morning last week when I, it sounded like an army was driving through town. I don't know what it was, it must have been like, it's, you know, like, once in a while you see these guys going to their weekend, you know, uh.
It's like adventure, like Jeep, like a bunch of.
Yeah, like a bunch of army Jeeps or something like that. I was so alarmed, it took so long, I didn't, I didn't, couldn't figure out what that was.
I've had, where I live in South Woodbury, I've seen like a convoy of, um, off-road vehicles that will go by.
They're very noisy.
So, and, and one time there was a, it was a, it's like a Jeep, you know, club, I think.
Yeah.
The officer had the same Jeep, it souped up in different ways and.
This was, yeah, this was in the morning. I don't get up that early, but maybe eight o'clock, it was, I don't know, it's a lot of heavy trucks. What am I trying to say? National Guard is what I was trying to say.
They might have been sitting up for the curfew.
Yeah, we had a lot, gonna talk about that.
Perfect.
Board of Adjustments said that there is a.
There's a curfew that can't come down off of the L H P.
Still, there's not more than three of them ever, right now, there's not more than three of them at a time.
Yeah, because buses, they have one in the morning, they have one in the afternoon.
Yeah. Okay, next Monday.
Hopefully, one of those two days works.
And you'll let us know, Diana, after you talk to them?
Hmm?
You'll let us know if they're confirmed or, I didn't put it in my calendar since it's up in the air.
I didn't either.
Okay. Really good at not putting things in my calendar.
You wanna clutter it up?
Yeah.
All right. I think that, um, unless there are, um, anything else to come for the board, uh, we can approve bills and payroll orders off camera.
Did we wanna do the executive session or?
Yeah, but I think that, I was just kinda like prepping this for that, yeah. So, I, we would need a motion to enter executive session.
I'll make a motion that we enter an executive session pursuant to one VSA three-one-three-A-three.
All right, thank you.
Got that, Michael?
I did, yeah.
And then, uh, we'll have to record the meeting at the end probably and send that voice memo saying that we didn't.
Alfie, you wanna stay? Want Alfie to stay?
Yeah, we can invite Alfie, yeah. As long as you're willing, if you're willing.
Won't be long.
Did you vote on this?
Oh, yeah. All those in favor of entering executive session for stated purposes, please say aye.
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 Aye, all right. Okay, thanks, Drew.